...safety. I strongly encourage our residents to review the city's approved strategic framework. In addition to the outlined goal areas, we also establish specific tasks and timelines, while also assigning individuals or groups to lead enumerated projects or initiatives. We are currently in the implementation/integration phase of this initiative, and I do expect additional updates for our residents and business owners benefits in the coming months. In the meantime, please rest assured that city leadership will continue to prioritize the issues that matter most to our residents. They are also the issues I've been messaging on since my tenure as mayor began in January of 2013. They include economic development, support for public safety, investment in our infrastructure, and openness and transparency in local government. Now, just a few additional items. This construction season, our city will complete several meaningful and impactful street and infrastructure projects, including resurfacing of Woodland Drive, lining of the water main on Industrial Drive, and our comprehensive sidewalk repair program will return to its annual cycle. A full list of infrastructure projects is available online with corresponding schedules. We encourage our residents to review material on ClearGov. Our $80 million-plus rehabilitation of our wastewater treatment plant, WWTP, remains on schedule, with final completion expected during the construction season of 2026. City Council will revisit the issue of the Milpon Dam restoration or removal later this fall, and in the next month, we will evaluate the future of our pay-as-you-go street millage, first approved by the Celine electorate in 2018. Transitioning to economic development, the city will support, with the support of our partners at Celine Main Street, has established a carefully vetted downtown social district, while also, while taking longer than initially expected, excuse me, we continue to make progress on our downtown green space or gathering space. In the ensuing months, we will also share and promote our annual economic development video, and last, we appear to be making solid progress on the sale development of a 1080 West Michigan Avenue. A proposal should be finalized in the next 60 days for City Council to review. Our police department is essentially fully staffed, but our department leadership is looking for some competent, qualified individuals to serve in part-time capacities, manning the front desk, assisting residents and guests with questions or concerns. If you're interested in serving, please contact Police Chief Radzik or Deputy Chief Hartwig, respectively. Later this evening, City Council will likely vote to release a recently completed analysis on the future of fire services in the Celine community. This is done in the spirit of openness, acknowledging, of course, disclosure is preferable to concealment. We look forward to working cooperatively with regional stakeholders to strengthen and modernize fire protection in years to come. Finally, earlier this evening, City Council, excuse me, earlier this spring, City Council adopted a very sensible and pragmatic budget, one that invests in areas our residents care about most. We will be keeping a careful eye on state and federal revenue streams, while also working to improve the financial viability of our city-owned rec center. The rec center is a valuable and quality-of-life-enriching service, which can undoubtedly be made better. Fortunately, we have a City Council-established task force working to this end. As always, we continue to encourage our residents and other community stakeholders to engage with us online and on social media. Please sign up for our DPW newsletter, HOA Updates, 411 Text Message Initiative, and please utilize our online reporting tool when deemed appropriate. Let me end by acknowledging the years of service and the innumerable contributions made by my City Council colleagues, Mayor Protam, Janet Dillon, Members Jack, CEO, Dean Gierba, Jen Harmout, Chuck Lesch, and Nicole Rice. Also, sincere thanks to our very dedicated staff. They care deeply for this community and provide exceptional service to our residents on a daily basis. On behalf of City Council, we thank each of you. Our community would not be the exceptional city it is without your commitment and contributions. I've said it before, Celine is a very special place, and there's no doubt in my mind, and there's no doubt in my mind, I continue to believe that our best days are yet to come. Thank you, my friends. God bless you, and may God bless Celine. We're going to transition now to the third item under Presentations, which is the Celine Area Fire Department Service Report. Acting City Manager Cole, would you like to begin?
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for this time this evening. We're very much looking forward to having CPSM, which is the consulting company that was hired with Joe Pozo. CPSM wasn't just selected because we did a bid, and they listed a great response for the bid. They were selected because they have extreme experience with over 400 municipalities, and they really focus on real-world means strategic thinking. So we're really looking forward tonight to getting a roadmap from them, not just a reported roadmap, and hearing from Joe, because with his prior experience and his nationally renowned kind of pragmatic questioning, we know that he's asked a lot of great questions, and we're looking forward to hearing the answers to those. So with that, Joe, do we have you on the line?
Check to make sure you're not muted.
Ben, you had him set him to go. Is he on?
Yeah. That's two hosts. I don't see him. I see Gary. On Council Live. I'm on it.
You know, the things we get to deal with technology, it works great sometimes, and other times it doesn't. So I let Joe know that we're ready.
You messaged him directly, Acting City Manager Cole? Okay, very good. We'll give it a couple minutes. Hopefully, he'll jump on, and if we need to proceed with other portions of the agenda, we can certainly do that. Say again, Mr. Goodman?
I have, I see Gary, I see myself, and then there's somebody else that's host, and I don't know who that is.
I would assume that's somebody on our end. I don't think he would be listed as host.
No reply. No reply right away.
But I see him on there.
Let's, all right, let's double back to this, assuming that he jumps on. We'll proceed with the consent agenda and some of the new business items. So real quick, before I read the motion that corresponds with the consent agenda, as I emailed late last week, it was requested by the County Board of Commissioners, specifically Commissioner Beeman, that City Council consider a resolution designating the Celine Senior Center as the main recipient of funds for the county's new senior millage. So I give credit where credit's due. I worked on wordsmithing it a little bit, as did the city clerk, but Acting City Manager Cole really took the lead on this today. We also designated the City of Celine and the rec center more specifically as recipients for funds, noting, of course, that we do significant senior programming, and I cleared that with Commissioner Beeman. She indicated that that would be fine. It's also my understanding that Commissioner Beeman followed up with each of you via email today around 3 o'clock, 3:30, to give a little bit of additional clarification on this issue. So the resolution, which is copied and provided for each of you this evening, is on the consent agenda. It's Agenda Item 25-115. And I believe, well, let me read the motion, and we'll see maybe perhaps Mayor Protam, Dillon, or others wanted items removed. So we'll proceed to the following consent agenda, which is normally adopted without discussion. However, to request to any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Anything that anyone wanted removed? If not, then I...
I would like to remove that resolution regarding the senior millage.
Okay.
So that we're able to have a discussion.
All right, so that one is the last item under new business, or, excuse me, the consent is struck. Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Moved.
Moved by C to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lesch. All those in favor approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the new business portion of our agenda this evening, and first up is Agenda Item 25-104, GIS General Service Proposal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt, or, excuse me, this will be a motion to approve or not to approve. The proposal as submitted in a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000.
Moved to acknowledge.
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Harmout. Engineer Humphris, would you like to begin?
Sure.
Pull that microphone a little bit closer to you, make sure the green light is illuminated at the base.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I was here about a month ago with a work session on this. Invite Joe out to DPW, please come if you have questions on this, so I guess I'm here to answer questions. It's just budgeted, something we've been doing for a few years now. So if you'd like me to jump back into my presentation from June 9th, let me know, or I have my apps here, but I'm not quite certain what the questions are.
Why don't you just, why don't you give primarily for the public's benefit, less for council? Can you give maybe like a 30-second to 60-second sort of overview of what this is and how it benefits the city?
Sure. So GIS is a spatial database, which means we get to store the attributes associated with our assets that are low ground or linear assets. So for instance, let's take our sanitary sewer system. We have 40 miles of pipe, 1,500 manholes, seven lift stations, not that much force main, maybe half a mile of force main valves associated with that. So every single one of those assets has an ID, attributes associated, for instance, the valve, what way does the valve turn, what is the material of the pipe, what size is the pipe, what age is the pipe, when was the last time the pipe was cleaned. All of these assets, it's a huge benefit to be able to store them spatially. That means that you can actually, where the asset is located below the ground is where you store the data for that asset. It's basically the bones, the starting point of effective asset management. You can't manage what you own if you don't know what you own. So step one is inventory, so we're, obviously, we've been in that phase for a couple of years now. We're getting much closer on that. We're now currently in condition assessment of some of those underground assets. Like I said, we presented just a snippet of the programs we use that for when we were here on June 9th in our work session. Love for you guys to come out to DPW. If you have more questions, we can go over it further, show you how we use this. This is a tool that I open every single day in using my job, and the more staff uses it, the more you don't know how you live without it.
That was great. Thank you. Questions for the engineer? Mayor Protam Dillon?
Thank you. Engineer Humphris, I appreciate you being here tonight. It was me that had asked that this come off. My question is not, I understand the scope of GIS, is just sort of getting a better handle on the as-needed portion of it, which is $80,000. Because when you sort of look at some of the tasks and such, you know, they're very generic, and I guess understanding, do we have a time or a dollar amount associated to some of those, so that we can better understand what exactly were, what the end result will be? So we can say, in one year, we expect to be done with XYZ part of GIS, or something like that. So that was what I was trying to figure out, as to, for $100,000, what do we, when we get to June 30th, what are we going to have ready, set in GIS?
Is this more a tool that we use to manage our assets than product that comes out of it? I mean, we showed you some of the applications, and I think there actually is a comprehensive list in the proposal, all that we use it for. I think we talked a lot at that work session. In fact, I think even one of the council members asked if we should be doing more than $100,000 a year. And one of the things we talked about at that meeting was that we can't afford an in-house technician for $100,000 a year, so we use a consultant for that, because they have a broad depth and can do all the different GIS aspects that we need. So again, that one of the attributes we, I mean, one of the applications we use it for is for sewer cleaning. One of the applications we use it for is hydrant flushing. And that's actually becoming a super critical component of our modeling. I mean, for the first time ever, we actually almost have a calibrated hydraulic model to help us really look at the scouring velocity and the flushing velocity, and where the source of water is coming from when we flush, and are we actually properly distributing the water throughout our distribution system. So all of those items are, I do this more as support services than deliverables. But I could be happy to, we can dig into this more. I think the Asset Management Subcommittee is the perfect place to dig into what you're talking to, or maybe not, this is like really even operations for a council meeting. But that's, I guess, where I'm coming from.
No, I appreciate that. Like I said, when I see things like, you know, large-scale wall map creation, I just, you know, trying to understand why we're paying an engineering firm to create a wall map.
Come on to DPW, I'll show you the map.
And so kind of understanding that. And so just, at what point are we going to get caught up? Pardon?
The wall map, I mean, which wall map are you speaking? Which asset?
Well, I'm just saying, on here just says large-scale wall map.
Exactly. I agree. So the wall map, we have a wall map for the sewer system, the water system, the storm system, the road system. So there's multiple maps that we use for different, like I say, each asset class has thousands of assets and attributes associated with it. So it's, I guess, I'd be happy to send you all of our, someday to all of the, I guess, I'm not sure how deep you want to dive here at the council meeting, or how deep we should dive at the Asset Management Subcommittee meeting.
No, I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, at what point is, are we putting the dollars into the data aspect of it?
I think we've been doing that for the, I mean, we're slowly gathering data. I mean, I would say that I had data points to make decisions off of in my other municipalities that I'm just starting to get here. So we're starting to get the inventory, we're just starting to get the data, and database decisions will save us millions of dollars in capital. I mean, I think I've already proven that with a couple, like, we saved $3 million on Eastvelt by redoing the modeling. I think there's an opportunity to save $10 million on Westvelt by redoing the modeling. So I think database decisions will ultimately save us millions of dollars in capital. But GIS is a tool for us to store the data, it's not a deliverable. It's a tool we use on a daily basis to manage our assets, not a, something, I mean, we're showing you cool things in council because of it. Some of the maps we show you, some of the things we send out internally are because of the investment in GIS, but I guess I don't envision it to be like a checkmark, these things were done by this date specifically. I can provide some of that clearly. We are clearly working our way towards percent, but that's where that table that we're working through in Asset Management Subcommittee is ultimately our goal, and I think that's a five-year plan. We're taking all 32 of our asset categories, categorizing them from most essential to the community enhancement. What level of service do we want to provide this? And then we can start saying, okay, the deliverable to actually get all of this inventory done is this date. We only have so many resources, so much time we can contribute to all of this data we're trying to collect. So it's going to be a multi-year process that we are just starting.
Right. But at what point will we be able to see sort of the tangible results? I guess, Joe, understanding, because as you just indicated...
The tangible results are apps that we're using to collect. Tangible result is that we actually have an idea of how many bends are in our water systems, so we can do a water model. The tangible result is we actually calibrated our water model for the first time. So I think it's the tangible results are what we presented at the June 9th meeting.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Harmout?
Yes. I love the fact that number one on this list is effective asset management, and I think it's super important. I remember being in your office, looking at a physical map, and it wasn't able to be updated real time, and that it's so important. We've made, we've lost money for the city because of poor asset management, and I think it's why we have it on the list as a main strategic plan item. I think maybe one of the questions, the only question that I would have is, yes, super essential, and it sounds like it's in place in other communities that you've worked with or whatever, is how is it determined that, and it sounds like also that we budgeted for this, correct? This is the amount that we've budgeted for this item? This is in the budget?
Yes.
I guess my one question that I would have is, how is it determined that $100,000 is the appropriate amount for this service?
And that's, that basically is how much we have available from our team, what they spend on us in an average month. And that's about how much we're spending in consult. Now, of course, the consultant fees that we are paying for this average, we're probably, I'm guessing here, I'm not looking at invoice, from $150 an hour to 200, you know, the consultants aren't, we're paying markups and insurance and all this stuff on top of that. So I'm guessing at how many hours a month, I could do the math backwards from that, about how many hours a month we're getting for that. But that is about how much we have done in the past. It's about how much our staff can push through, too. We have limited in-house resources also. So even if we had 200, we wouldn't be able to check it and QA, QC it, and drive the work if we were to increase the scope much more than we currently have. So, and right now, it is a matter of trying to start with the essential. We started with the water and sanitary sewer. We're kind of storm is our next big essential one that we really don't have as good of, we're currently working with the state on our misport permit, we're currently in violation of that. We're currently trying to work our way through our storm inventory and what reaction they're supposed to be expecting for storm. So that's our next big essential thing that we're trying to do as far as a linear asset. So that's where some of the work will go this coming year. The other big thing we're working towards this year is GIS-based capital improvement plan. I think you're all well aware, since I've started here, when I started here three years ago, we had a very reactionary capital improvement plan. We didn't have enough money for all the work we wanted to do. We didn't have full scopes of work. We had, you know, we have road projects, but we had utility needs underneath there. We didn't quite understand all that was going into it. I think where ClearGov was a good stopgap for us before we got the SNA online, so we had this whole, so the capital plan not only does it have the projects, but it has this whole financial side to it. But when it comes to the public-facing side of it, it makes a lot more sense if it's a spatial base, just like we're talking about, like, this is a spatial database. You can spatially see the polygon of where this road project is. I mean, this year, we were in, we were literally on 14 to 20, I don't even know how many roads. We were on this quite a bit, because we were in all over toward, all in, so the list of roads was long, but on a map, it's much more clear where we're at. So that's one of the big things we're working towards this year is a GIS, switching our capital improvement communication tool with the public from ClearGov, which is more of a financial-based system, which we don't need as much now that we have the SNA online, to GIS, which more of an engineering-based system. So, sorry, I got a little bit on a tangent, but that's one of the big things we're working towards this year.
I hear council member Dillon's, maybe one of the questions maybe she has also that I have is, is what, like, what percentage of completion are we at? What does 100% completion, like, what's the timeline? And maybe, I would be interested to understand, like, what the estimates are going to go along with that. But that's all the questions that I have.
That makes sense. Yes, it does. And I think for the completion, with time, I do envision our investment with a consultant will go down, especially as we manage it more ourselves. But there's always going to be the attribute that's something that needs to be fixed in the database, it is a living document, so it's never going to be complete. But I also agree with you, it's a completely fair question for us, and I agree with you, it's a completely fair question to assign some deadlines to this, because it is just a rolling operational thing that is a good chunk of money. And I'm not just, I'm not saying that it's a light, a small amount of money. I am just convinced beyond all measures that this is a small drop in the bucket compared to what we will save once we get all this data in there and properly manage all of our assets. That's where I'm coming from with it. And I'm hoping that our Asset Management Subcommittee, or Subcommittee, which has council members Lesch, Dillon, and Gierba on it, we need to share, I think, with all the council some more of those, and that most percent completed that we haven't gotten to on that spreadsheet. That's really what a lot of these questions are coming from.
Additional questions, Mr. Gierba?
Yeah, and that's one of the things we discussed in our last Asset Management, and Engineer Humphris is going to bring that information. We've been talking about an asset management inventory and so forth, and that information to present to council to actually see kind of how those are playing out, so you can give some input. It's been being worked on for the last eight months, and so it really hasn't progressed any further without some additional understanding of what it needs to do. As for the GSI, will we be doing something on the entire wastewater treatment plant?
So that was what, plants are considered vertical assets, and they can be integrated into GIS. There are work order systems, but right now, no, we do not have plans, we have not tackled any of our vertical assets in GIS, because they kind of come with a complexity of their own. I know that both Wastewater Superintendent Briggs and DPW Director Havela have talked about, like, work order systems and how a GIS work order system plays in with the plant. But right now, as far as GIS inventory, no, the vertical assets are not in GIS. So the plants basically are not in GIS, or the rec center, or the buildings. Those are all vertical assets.
Right. I was just wondering how we would move forward with that, because, I mean, as we look at our asset management, that becomes a big thing, and whatever systems we adopt, we're doing this. I think the one, maybe my colleagues mentioned, and we did talk about, a little bit about this at the Financial Subcommittee Review, when you look at this, it's the project within the, you know, we have $80,000 allocated. So are they, and I looked at this, there's like 55 different pay rates, schedules and such. So are you doing subprojects, and then they're pricing them out and giving you that information? Or is it a, well, today, we're going to use this individual in this, or?
We have a biweekly meeting, and in that meeting, we actually go over what we're working on for that next month, and it depends on who we're, so, for instance, right now, we're knee-deep in verifying what side of the T and the water system valves are on. So the problem with the water system is that a valve, you don't, like, a sanitary sewer manhole, you can pop open and see what way the pipe goes. A water system can have a bend right after, and what side of the T is of a valve is important for our modeling. So right now, that's taking a lot of the lower-level GIS person walking with our higher-level foreman to knock that all out. So that's a more hours, less cost project, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I didn't know what, how those deliverables work, and if you're putting a scope of number of hours and things like that. And then a couple other things, you know, as we've looked at it, OHM is becoming our main GIS thing, just like Tetracheck became our main thing, and we've had our ups and downs with those. So in knowing, you know, we're investing a lot of money into our outside consultants and such, and I think this is the concern, that we just need to continue looking at that from my perspective, and just saying that, and I'm glad that my colleagues brought that up. Just a question for our city manager, Acting City Manager. I noticed on here Zack is signed as a signature on this. Who's supposed to be signing off on these contracts? Isn't it the city manager on all of these?
The general rule of thumb is that the city manager is supposed to sign off on all contracts.
Yeah, I just noticed on this one, I'm not sure about the other ones. So how is that, that does continue to happen, correct?
Yeah, so if council has approved the work already, then sometimes, the department heads will call and say, can I sign off on this? But the general, I think the city manager is responsible for signing all items and contracts.
Okay, just because we had that concern a couple of years ago with the former DPW director, and I wanted to make sure that he's aware of how this happens. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the city engineer? Tasha, thank you very much, appreciate your time and work on this timely and important initiatives. We do have a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve the proposal as submitted in a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000?
Moved.
Moved by Gierba. Was that seconded by Lesch, or, Lesch, okay, thank you, sir. I'll get you on the next one, Councilmember Harmout. All those in favor, excuse me, is there any additional discussion? Appears to be none. All those in favor of approving the dollar amount not to exceed $100,000, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. Let me defer to the Acting City Manager. Do we have our guests on the line?
I just sent the news link out.
It's to be momentarily.
Okay, you want us, let's try to deal with this next item on the agenda, because it's pretty innocuous in my full pie. I thought it was on the consent portion of the agenda, but it's actually under new business. So we'll move on to 25-106, Resolution Recognizing the Celine Varsity Softball Team Division I State Champion. This will be a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted.
Moved to adopt and submitted.
Okay, and that was seconded by Rice. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor of approving the resolution as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. We will get them a clean copy on the nice resolution paper with the gold seal, and try to find an opportunity to present that to them in the coming days or weeks. Acting City Manager Cole, we're ready to go? Okay, I will defer back to you.
Wonderful. Joe, do we have you on the line?
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Joe, we center public safety and the air.
Good to be, good to have you with us, Joe. Apologize for the technical errors this evening.
Sir, it's quite all right. It's not your fault things happened.
Joe, the floor is yours. So we have the first slide of your presentation up on the screen. You may proceed when ready.
Okay, all right, Mayor. Well, thank you so much, and for the audience, and those also listening in, to oppose those center of management, we engage with the city to complete a fire EMS assessment, and also provide some alternatives, perhaps, for future fire EMS service. Next slide, please, for each study purpose. So, the purpose of the study was to conduct an analysis, certainly of fire EMS services, and then provide an assessment of options and alternatives, which we have done. There is a full report, I'm just going to provide some brief highlights this evening. The report does include a data analysis and extensive research and development for the report. Next slide. So, what did we do? Well, we assessed the Celine area fire department. We assessed the four participating communities, Celine, Lowdy Township, Celine Township, and York Township. We also assessed Huron Valley ambulance service, assessed all of the workload or response times of both key fire department and Huron Valley. We conducted many, many stakeholder meetings with Celine area fire department staff, including the fire chief, the board, city of Celine, city manager and staff, city of Celine council members. And we also talked to Pittfield Township Fire Department and Public Safety staff for future options. Next slide, please. So again, what we did, we analyzed several fire service alternatives for the city, and some alternative services for EMS as well. You can see here, one of the alternatives, first alternative is, the city just maintains or remains with the current fire configuration with Celine area fire. Alternative two looks at the city establishing their own fire department. The third alternative, the city would establish its own fire department, and then perhaps contract house services with surrounding townships that they so desire. And we also looked at the city contracting firefighting services without their own fire department, but perhaps with another fire department that may be contiguous with them, or maybe not contiguous with them. So we looked at all of those options. And certainly, we looked at alternatives for versions of services as well, and all that is contained in the full report. Next slide, please. So, I'll sort of transition into some key points. And so certainly, a fire EMS demand is always a key point, something that we focus in on in all of our reports. So on the left of the slide is the Celine area fire department toward responses for a one-year period, that would be calendar year 2024. And on the right is H P A or Huron Valley ambulance response. You can see that the city of Celine is the biggest user in both EMS and fire, almost 59% of fire workload, and about 64% of the EMS workload. Next slide, please. So we also look at response times as we go through, and do these analysis, which are very important. There's a couple of key points here, I think, that everybody needs to keep in mind, particularly as we go through the alternatives. So when you look at average and 90th percentile response time, they are measured both ways across the country, depending on the type of fire department that you have. Generally, career fire departments, or some fire departments that staff mostly with career that are first out in their response are evaluated at the 90th percentile. So we do both, right? But in both cases, travel time is also, it's very, very important to look at in all of these analyses. And so if you just look at the average response time, city of Celine has about a three-minute average travel time, that is, soon as the station is notified. The turnout time is time to take after the dispatch for the, for the crew, you know, the equipment, and then they turn out, and then travel time is actually from there to the heli team. That's an important piece of information. The 90th percentile is just under five minutes for the city of Celine. But then, as you look at the townships, particularly Lowdy Township, they have the longer travel times of all of the Celine area fires district. But if you get out into Lowdy and Celine Township, particularly the, the area that is out there that is covered, much as that is rural, however, emergencies will still occur in a rural setting as they would in suburban or built-up area or an urban setting. So those response times are important. Just, it's just to frame up what we've looked at as well. Next slide. So, again, overall, the response times favor the city of Celine. And why do they favor the city of Celine? Well, because the fire station, a Celine area fire department is currently located inside of the, of the city. Next slide. So some key points that we found out, and I'll just start with this. We spent a lot of time with Celine area fire department, just talking to them, looking at their operation. And I will tell you that the crews, the employees, and the take-all people in Celine area fire department are very dedicated to what they do. We did not see anything there with crews and the staff that I would say made us nervous. They were very dedicated to what they do. In fact, while we were there, they had a large brush fire outside of the city. However, they turned out all of the equipment, about five in the afternoon. And so that included the on-duty career staff, that included take-all staff, that included career staff that came back, had some contact, to ensure that there were enough people on scene that did get the emergency. So again, they're all very, very dedicated. I tell you when the bell goes off, we did not see anything there. Again, with those people that made us nervous. So some key points, some things to point out. Util and automatic aid is very important to fire departments, particularly those who really staff one single piece of equipment as they respond. So you have a dependency on other, you know, agencies to come in and help you, fire agencies, EMS agencies, to add to what we call an effective response force, particularly with building fires. So they are involved in a very good mutual aid. However, that mutual aid comes from fire stations and from points potentially in excess of 10, 15, 20 tents. So it's not as though you have continuous fire departments where they have stations that are contiguous to you. At least when we were evaluating this, there has been some change, and there will be inside of townships as they go to fire stations south, which is on the field, a bit closer to Lowdy Township on their northern border. However, the mutual aid and the automatic aid is there, it's just going to take some time to get there. The Celine area fire department has sufficient capabilities to respond to EMS calls, and they're current to what we would call a non-transport capacity. And again, they do that very well. Next slide. So, we looked at everything, right? So there isn't need for facility renovations of this Celine area fire department station. It's just, it's an older building, there's a lot of rooms in there that have been converted into parking areas, and just living areas. And so it is indeed a renovation. There's a potential need, I just was explaining the travel times and the response times, there's a potential need for a new fire facility to meet what's current in some potential future needs in western S A F D district, which would be Lowdy and Celine Township. Those areas continue to develop, particularly the northeastern part of Celine Township, and that sort of eastern, southeastern part of, and northern points of Lowdy Township, right? As they continue to develop, that will increase fire and EMS demand. Regardless of the fire service delivery models you choose is right, there's certainly several alternatives for council to consider. EMS ground transport will always remain available in Washington County as long as the county has a contract with A T A. So we did see anything there. Although, and it's obvious in the end that we kind of go through again, EMS is evolving in Washington County, as four fire departments look to do their own EMS transport for their communities. So there are some things on the horizon, so, a council, and as I talked to council in the past, just some things to consider moving forward. Next slide, please. So the first alternative, and the first alternative really is, the city just remains in the current fire configuration, which means, like you say, Celine area fire department. So there's some advantages to that, right? Right now, you have shared costs and resources. You know, the, the district, again, includes the city, it includes three, well, two and a half other townships. And so you have a very, you know, it's sort of cost efficient, right? So you have more municipalities contributing to the funding. And again, you can pool resources this way, and allows you to continue to implement some higher technology, higher quality equipment, technology, staffing, when you need it, et cetera, than perhaps single municipality, if you want to. If the station itself, or the city of Celine, is strategically located in the city, so you have the best of the response times naturally because you have a fire station in your city. We did not come across any indication that the district fire department has not serviced anywhere else store. So we did not gauge any, no confidence in their service. We did not do any survey. We just did not gauge any, no confidence in service, okay? And the people providing the service. Bell goes off, crews get on trucks, and they're out the door. And again, to get a fire department located in the city certainly fosters local pride and presence, right, specific identity. Next slide, please. So there's some disadvantages to this, right? So, and I would, and these disadvantages really are presented, you know, from the city's perspective, right? So we're just looking at it again from the city, right? Because the city really doesn't have any local control. Any municipality that has its own department, right, whether it be police, fire, EMS, public works, roads, water distribution, utilities, all of that, you have your own agency, then you have control over those agencies. Of course, the council has authority, the council has sustain the budgets, you know, and measure against other city budgets and other city, et cetera. Currently, we're negotiating with the other municipalities at fire board level for sufficient things. You have two of nine votes at fire board level, with council, right? All votes come together to decide, you know, how you move forward, particularly with funding, staffing, equipment, building, capital, all of that. And of course, all of that leads to, you know, less direct oversight, right? Issues, complaints about service, they're harder to address, particularly for city citizens who want to address an issue with fire or EMS, right? You can have the same situation with EMS at a whole other level, because they contract with county, who will get into that event. But we really don't have any local control. Next slide, please. So, the part of the R and D was, right, give us some recommendations, right, on the fire service itself, and any ways we can take some improvements. So there are, right? So I saw that every board member, and folks with some folks on the steering committee or a risk committee, I believe, and so a lot of good input, a lot of good discussion. A lot of these things I'm going to say now, I believe they've already addressed at an earlier meeting this year. So, and hats off to them for that. And a lot of that came from just, you know, our discussions, D P S N discussions with board members. So one of the things we felt was that could increase some communication, and increase some, some communication, particularly from the fire chief through the board, act as the city was, was just receiving from a high monthly, to a monthly schedule. You know, the board itself is the corporate board, and the fire chief can access the, you know, the corporate leadership at that level. So it's important that you be discussing things going on in the fire department, so there's no surprises. A lot of things go on in the fire station and the fire department after just a five month. We did not really come across a solid multi-year fiscal plan, so we're making, we made a recommendation on that. This certainly includes all capital and operating costs, stewardage, right? You need some renovation work at that fire station, so now is the time to plan for that because that will be expensive. Staffing need plan, all of these things need to be forecasted. And it's certainly a sustainable funding formula. You have a, you have an older funding formula, it's been around for a lot of years, it includes a lot of different pieces that potentially could be updated and just be more contemporary. Either good, long-term, high-potent strategic plan that goes hand-in-hand with the fiscal plan, would be very good. Certainly with company goals and objectives that align, again, with your long-term fiscal plan. The number of, with the high laws, I know they just went through a high law change, however, it really, at least a lot out about the board's really oversight and what they really are responsible for. So our recommendation is, we've seen a lot of these types of arrangements, and you want to make sure that, just like at city council level, right? Like you have in your ordinances and chart, you want to have a good set of high laws that addresses board. And what their responsibilities and accountability are of fiscal oversight, city goals and objectives, planning and outcomes, and then certainly evaluation of the fire chiefs in operations, right? You want to be able to evaluate the chiefs in overall operations on a annual basis. Next slide, please. Couple more at the board level, right? Just goals and objectives. We did identify some communication gaps, you know, with, between the fire chief and the board, the fire chief, city of Celine, city council, and any, any district sort of operating level where you're involving one or more municipalities, you certainly want to have open communication with those municipalities. You want to be able to report out to the board, and municipality invites you to come over and provide updates on the fire department. Those are all just really best practices. So we gave some recommendations on that. And the board is certainly handily outlined for the fire chief, right? Clear and concise expectations for the year, right? Standing activity, things that could be included in the annualized fire chief performance discussion or evaluation, right? As early as possible, at the board level. And certainly, you just got a new fire marshal position on the S A F D, it's a critical position. Community risk reduction is a critical layer in higher protection, and just higher protection in any community. However, you know, it's always good when you get a new position like that to outline initiatives and expectations for that position, and how you're going to tackle the number of buildings that you see inspected, right? And inspection schedule, how you tell the fire marshal factors in, the public life safety education, all of those, right? So that's all fire chief level, and things that we just saw that would be a best practice, good things to put in place. And then again, the board, something to look at, right? It involves the board, and then again, certainly enhances the board's expectations as well. You need a fire apparatus replacement plan. We gave you a lot of recommendations on that, and ways you could go with certainly higher apparatus. You know, smaller fire departments that just don't have staffing, to get everything, everything out all the time. It's good to combine pieces of apparatus, right? Like heavy rescues and engine companies into rescue engines where specialty built, where you can have fire pumps, fire water, fire hose, all the rescue equipment is on there. And that's a very valuable piece, to be a first-out piece, because you can handle almost any emergency with that. Combining, you know, like tankers or ten water tenders and engines into, to an engine that's a larger water tank, or can carry all the rainfall hose, and a lot of different options. Those are some examples. Tell, tell the fire chief or the board that what they have to do, just you got to have a good plan. Fire apparatus today takes 36 to 42 months when you, when you order it. They're very expensive, so you, when you invest in that type of capital now, you will want to do it, certainly with a plan. We think that the S A F D and their board need to keep regularly with A T A. In fact, we made that recommendation, that city recommendation, again, we talked about, we talked about A T A, but it is important to have regular meetings, to have A T A come to that the board level and discuss response times, what they're doing about travel times, response times, or any way so we can, you know, any way that they can reduce that. Do have an echo unit at the S A F D station, best practice. However, just being engaged with them, again, it's just a best practice, and it opens communication channels. There is a potential, right, that you need to renovate, because there's also potential for a website facility, so again, just some good sound financial planning, keep account of planning that. Next slide, please. Second alternative is, right, to establish their own fire department. And of course, there certainly are a lot of advantages to that, right? You're certainly going to have greater control of oversight of your own fire department, direct advantage, hiring, training, budgeting, all of it, align all the department priorities with city, specific needs, long-term planning, tailor year. You can tailor services to fire prevention, fire prevention, community risk reduction, public life safety education, special events, right? All of that certainly can be, you know, you're driven through council and city manager's office, or the fire chief. or the fire chief drives it up, and communicates up, here's what we're doing, here's our plans, et cetera. You just have, you have a greater understanding, right? It's a usual, what I call a usual management of expectations across the board. It's local accountability. Residents have a complaint about the fire department, they know where to go. And it's their fire department. Local pride, trends, specific identity, again, and again, you can manage all the PGE, high-acting, the hiring, training, budgeting operations. Next slide, please. So there's disadvantages to this, right? And it's cost. There is a significant startup cost when you start your own fire department. Certainly, it's going to involve fleet. Just to get one engine on the street, right? You need two, because if it takes two to make one, if the primary engine is out of service, right, you're going to have to have a reserve. Potentially going to need a facility, whether that's a new facility, built from the ground up, or you find a big facility that perhaps you can convert to a fire station, still will have renovation costs and costs to that. Potentially going to have recruitment and staff challenge. You've got a lot of fire departments around you, and so you're going to be competing with all of them, and you're competing with what, you know, the salaries that are in those collective bargaining agreements, you're going to be competing with how they recruit, what type of fire department they have. So just understand that there is competition there. And then there's certainly, after you do your startup costs, you have all the ongoing costs which potentially are going to be higher than what current contract costs are with the lean area fire department, because it kind of depends on what honor you'd like to go with there. And so when you have a fire department, you potentially may have to expand other departments and human resources, clients, purchasing, risk management, et cetera. Just take drive another FTE or two in those agencies. Next slide, please. So the current cost is two point eight nine six million dollars and change, and which is thirty-four percent, plus thirty-four percent from previous budget. That adds four fire higher positions and a fire army, so they can help the staffing on their current engine and give them some options to when they respond. That gives them more people on duty every day, and maintains that so they can roll with four, split up two and two, if they want to bring two pieces or three in one, or chief chooses to do that. But there are, you know, that's what their costs are. And, you know, when you look at a single sort of service fire department, a single engine fire department, we see that across the country, trying to get at least four on duty so we have options for them to respond. We gave you a couple of options, right? An engine sort of concept where you just respond with an engine, but again, it's going to take two to make one, or a quint. A quint in a city like yours would be favorable to use a quint. It's one of those combined pieces of apparatus I was talking about, so that's a, it has a, it has a sort of elongated engine chassis, a little bit longer than the engine, way they build it today, you still get them with a single ten or half, small hack. Doesn't mean a lot right now when you're considering that, but it's shortened the chassis. Got a ladder on top, typically seventy-five to eighty-five feet, you can get a longer, but a lot of departments go with a seventy-five or eighty-five foot hydraulic aerial ladder, so it also has a fire pump, fire hose, has a pump and a tank on, so you get an engine and a ladder truck capability at the front of the building. We just put that in there because you have a lot of old stories, buildings, you got it downtown, and so you get a higher floor, they're giving you the ladder, so we gave you, that has the option, you can see there, you know, just under a million dollars or a little bit more in price difference, depending on what honor you might choose to do your own fire department. Next slide, please. And then, of course, we gave you all these options, and you chose to, you get a fire chief, at least the fire chief has the option, because where will be your fire chief? You'll hire somebody that will say, yeah, I think we might need this. So our costing is really with the engine concept, it's either fifteen or eighteen people, fifteen people, you choose a minimum every day of three on an engine, but it requires one additional, and we add one additional person per week. If you want to minimize overtime, then you can add the additional person, so you have one person every time somebody's talking every day, and it minimizes overtime, and the eighteen person will guarantee, let me guarantee with all of these words, it will provide a minimal staffing of four people on the apparatus, so again, you get some options when you respond. And you see costs there, range is anywhere from two point five to two point nine million dollars, and which is very close to what you're paying now. Kind of say guaranteed, wrong use of words on staffing, but you never know what's going to happen on any given day, right? Go back four years, five years, move on to code, this staffing is very hard to keep up. But anyhow, so we've given, we've given you options on that with just the people and what the funding would be for that. Next slide, please. So the third alternative is, right, you establish your own fire department, potentially you contract out with some other, with some other communities. Cost remains the same, right? You need an engine company to respond, or a quint company to respond. Advantages of this, potential for lower overall cost, right? If you give some help from your partner community, certainly support intergovernmental cooperation, trends in UTLA, and virtue harm for all several communities. You still maintain control of the fire department, and then you're just contracting these services out to participating municipalities who are agreed upon the. Next slide. So there's advantages to this, right? Well, you're going to be taking city resources, and there's going to be routinely dispatch to other communities, right? So it impacts your resiliency within the city, right, for overlapping calls. Now, a lot of overlapping calls that occur currently with SAMP, but there's always a potential that, let's just say you create your own fire department, you're contracting with Tlean Township, the engine's out, a lot of calls in Tlean Township, you get another call in the city, and it's going to be a long time to contact, or you're going to have to wait for UTLA to come in. Just as a consideration, right? So I just think it's important for you to understand that. You'll have to still, you know, consider other communities' priorities in the budget, right? So just as you have to look at your priorities every year, and the three townships have to look at theirs, and then the district comes in with a budget, it would be the same on them as you're certainly currently facing now with the district. Any cost increase, potentially got to negotiate those with the municipalities, so you need to purchase another piece of equipment, which eventually you will, you need to put on additional staffing, you know, potentially you will in the future, so all of that has to be negotiated. So next slide, please. So the next alternative really is, right? Well, what if we just contract the service, what we contract to somebody else? Contracting now with the lean area fire department. So we've looked all around, and really for you, the one that's most contiguous to you or would be closest to you is Pittsfield Township fire department, right? So it's the most logical, that's what we study, and that's what we look for. So they have three fire stations, and really it would be their stations, one and three, would probably have primary response in the city, but certainly if there was something really going on and you were contracting, then you would get all three fire stations, and enabling fire stations. Next slide. So there are, there's some potential advantages to this, right? And so I'll start with there's potential for lower costs and/or crew value. Saline area, excuse me, Pittsfield Township fire department, that's three stations, right? So right away, you're contracting with a larger, you know, fire department, so they will then be able to avail those, all of those resources to you, and all of that staffing to you. Although they still do have to utilize, but they would be your primary response agency. They may be able to give you a more competitive rate, and of course, that, as I said, is certainly going to include more comprehensive services, right? You get the advantage of that larger department, just like now, you're with HPA, right? So it's a large agency, so you get the advantage of a large department and that surge type It allows you to just do really, you know, more direct negotiating, if you're not part of a eighty-four municipality fire department in the district, you're contracting with Pittsfield, so you have a chance at least to negotiate, right, on levels of service, you have a chance to negotiate fees, et cetera. I think there's a real potential for shared fire facility and equipment that could be located in the city, and you would share this with Pittsfield Township. I've talked to the interim city manager about this, you know, particularly up on the near industrial park area, right? You potentially may have some land and or buildings that you could convert to a fire station. However, that said, I think that that would be a real win-win for Pittsfield Township because they have some longer response times to take it farther south in their district. It closes some of those gaps, and is certainly going to close any gap that would be created in the city of Saline. Which are into the disadvantages, right? So our main concern with Pittsfield, you know, without a substation, is there's just long response times. There's going to be parts of Saline, city of Saline where they cannot get to in really ten minutes, fourteen minutes, and beyond. Right now, you have some very, very good travel times, and you saw those with Saline Fire Department. So there's going to be an impact gap without that substation where you can really produce what the response travel times will be. There potentially is some effect on the ISO rating, and so the ISO rating is affected and it goes negative in any way, and there's a potential that homeowners insurance is affected by that, and that is because now you'll be, you know, greater than five miles from a fire station. Although, you still are near, maybe it's a water system, because they're only, most of, most of it's not all the city, it's only water, I believe all of it is, and but you still have that greater than five miles from a fire station, so there may be some effect on the ISO rating. Community perceptions, right? They've sort of been dealing with and being certified with some of these area fire departments, and so, you know, what would that do to community perceptions? And then if you break away and just go with the, with Pittsfield, and I'm not saying, I haven't talked to load eyes, Saline Township, or we work township, okay? But if one breaks from the others, then is there a potential for damage in our government relationships? And I just put that in there for that. So some key questions, right, that need to be contemplated. What are the actual cost savings, right, for service improvements if you change for lives? What effect will the increased response time have on the community without that substation? And what can you consider on substation, right? To serve the city and the township, and then, you know, what's capital cost for the city for that? Next slide, please. So last, we looked at EMS, and we're coming to the end, so we certainly looked at, there's a whole section in the report on EMS, and right now, the fire department, whatever fire delivery office you might go to, you've got to be EMS provider, because they're on down, because the contract right there with Austin County. That contract does not say that they are, and it will always be sole provider, okay? My point is those things have in the report, however, you can have an EMS provider. Great reputation, been around southeast Michigan since nineteen eighty-one. Right now, they are paired with a first responder service with, if you're in fire, they also have the echo unit, which has a paramedic home board, responds to high activity calls within the city, and of course, the greater response to district, to reduce response times between you get ground transport ambulance. City doesn't put any funding into HPA, right? They recover all of their revenues through, through transport revenue, and that's how they pay their bills. And then, of course, HPA is part of the bigger urgent health partners, right? So as you need surge capacity, there's something really going on in the area, there is some affiliation draw from other parts of HPA. Next slide. Disadvantages, certainly, they're a regional provider, so they do what we call dynamic.
What happened?
It's time, right?
Is it possible to get him to log back on?
I'm trying to see.
Yeah, even for questions or comments, he's essentially done with the presentation. There might be one or two more slides.
Is the mic still running?
Say again?
Do you need this?
Here you go, we're going to go old school, so I'm going to put you on speaker and use it next to the microphone.
Right.
I don't know if this is going to work or not, but let's try it.
Go ahead, we ready?
Is the microphone on, on the bottom?
Yeah, we just, I did see something flash on my screen there where the, the briefing had to go.
There we go.
Just tell me, just tell me where we at, where you, where I got called.
You're on disadvantages for alternative five, and we should probably wrap it up here shortly so we can get to questions and comments from my six colleagues.
Right, so I think as an alternative, the city can always consider soliciting, providing this ground transport service through an R and D, there's plenty of services in Michigan that potentially may bid, you have some others around you. But as I said at the beginning, EMS landscape in the county is evolving, right? You have fire departments that are looking to take on the EMS role, so I would pay very, very close attention to that, see how that evolves, and then move from there. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, very good, we appreciate the very comprehensive and thorough report, and I can note for the public's benefit that the comprehensive report in its totality is even more thorough, and it contains a lot of analysis and data, and of course, when we entertain the subsequent motion, I will be voting in the affirmative to release that publicly. I think it should be placed not only on the city website, but a hard copy also placed in the front kiosk, affording those who don't have internet access or are not computer savvy the opportunity to review the report in its totality. I generally start with to my right for questions and comments, but I'll start to my extreme left today, and then work my way back and end with council member Rice and then myself. Councilmember Hermont, do you have any comments or questions for our consultant this evening?
I do not.
Okay, councilmember Lash?
Nothing for our consultant.
Oh, no, actually, I'm sorry, going the opposite way. Councilmember Lash?
No.
Councilmember Seale?
Nothing.
Mayor Potem Dillon?
Not at this time.
Okay, councilmember Gearbo?
No, I appreciate your overview.
Very good. Councilmember Rice?
Nope, nothing for me.
Okay. City manager Cole, anything you would like to add before we wrap this up and excuse our guest?
No, not at this time.
Very good, well, we appreciate your time and attention, and thank you for the thoughtful presentation this evening, Joe.
Yes, sir, Mayor, have a good, have a good evening, sir.
You as well, have a great summer. Pleasure working with you. We're going to transition now to new business item twenty-five dash one eleven. This is Saline Area Fire Department Fire Service Report Waiver, excuse me. This will be a motion to waive the attorney-client privilege on fire service report and request staff to post the report on the city's website on July eighth, twenty twenty-five, after council approval. Moved by Gearbo to waive, and that was seconded by Lash. Discussion on the motion, or any comments? Councilmember Rice?
Not particularly on the motion, I just want to maybe set some follow-up for council on the. on this report and, you know, where we should go with it next.
Acting City Manager Cole, do you care to comment on that? I mean, I can provide some insights. Our consultants gave us a lot to digest and evaluate, which we will be doing in due course, but if there's anything you'd like to add, I would welcome that.
I spoke with Joe about how to best implement the plan or how to go about kind of looking through the alternatives. And one tactic that he said works very well is by setting up a smaller group of people to kind of evaluate the different alternatives and walk through the process to be able to go through the data and then return that back to the rest of city council and the public.
Very good. I do want to thank everybody who participated in the interviews and evaluations. I think there's some interesting data and thoughts. I appreciate how succinct and clear the report is, laying out the various alternatives and then clearly noting both their advantages and disadvantages. I do want to note, which was very reassuring, and our consultant indicated it today, that at no time did he come to the conclusion that our department wasn't well-staffed by competent, highly-trained professional individuals who cared deeply for the Celine community. So that was, that was very reassuring and something we all knew, but it was good to have it confirmed as part of this report. I strongly encourage people to review the report. Once it's placed online, I can say without hesitation that during my tenure as mayor, this is one of the most comprehensive, thorough, independent reports and analyses that we've had done on an issue-specific topic, and I think will be a very useful tool moving forward. So as I stated in my mid-year State of the City address, I'm in favor of re-releasing this publicly because I think disclosure is always preferable to concealment, and I think it can be part of a broader discussion on how we can improve and modernize fire services in the ensuing years and decades in the Celine community. Anything else that members would like to add? We have a motion on the floor, then, I'm sorry, who had a comment?
I.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So just following up on Councilmember Rice's comment, I do think that we need to attach some sort of a timeline to this at this point, just because we're putting this out there and we're not putting out a decision. So I think to just sort of float it out in the universe is not really fair to the community. So I think that we should establish, we don't have to do it at this meeting, but I think at the next meeting, we should provide a timetable as to if we are going to create a subcommittee and what exactly they're looking at, when they're reporting back, and when we will provide a decision to the public and more importantly, to the fire board. Because I don't think that it's, we're going to continue in perpetuity without, without making a final statement and decision.
Any additional questions, comments, Mr. Girbaugh?
Just a comment, I appreciate, I think this report has shown where we need to improve ourselves upon in addressing a lot of the administrative oversight, things that have been my concern. I mean, at least I know that Lori Champion and members of the steering committee have been working diligently at addressing those things and moving us into a 21st century approach. One of my things with this is I'm hoping is that this will help develop and increase more discussion among all the units because there seems to be a lot of rumors out there among even the other townships about what they're thinking about doing for their services or doing it on their own. And I would like to make sure that if we're going to have these discussions, that this is what starts to get this going because I think we're all on a concern of what's going to happen in the next four to five years, and this report is that catalyst for doing that kind of discussion.
If there's nothing further, we do a motion on the floor, moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Lash, to waive. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We move on to new business item 25-113, special land use for a portion of 1415 Industrial Drive, parcel number 18-12-30-451-014, a portion of unaddressed parcel 18-12-30-451-990, and all of unaddressed parcel 18-12-30-451-011. This will be a motion to acknowledge, received the memorandum from Community Development Director Aiken, and to approve or not to approve the special land use for development of portion of 1450 Industrial Drive, I'm not going to read the parcel number again, a portion of the unaddressed two adjacent parcels for an automotive repair facility and collision shop.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Moved by Girbaugh to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice, so gets you on the next one, Councilmember Seale. Community Development Director Aiken, would you care to give some obligatory remarks regarding this issue?
Yes, as you recall, this was a couple portions of city-owned property that there's under purchase and development agreement that was approved about six to eight weeks ago. In that time, the applicant has come to agreement with PMM Properties, which is the 4.96 acre parcel to the south that is currently vacant. Last month, on June 3, they submitted application for special land use and a conceptual site plan that includes a 10,000 square foot maintenance building and a 5,000 square foot office building on the front, at the front portion of the property, which will be headquarters for Aero Energy Headquarters, be Aero Energy's headquarters. So this is for a collision shop, basically it's a maintenance garage for facility vehicles for the trucking company. The portion of their trucking, or majority of their trucking is for aeronautical fuel, is there? Okay, if I remember correctly. But they've been across the street for a number of years and are just looking to upgrade. It was conditionally approved by Planning Commission with the condition that along the western property line, which also borders the railroad, that they put some trees in there. We are working, because they proposed to put in some asphalt millings, the entryway, good portion of about 800 feet will be paved or concrete and then do asphalt millings now. Because this is in a wetland area and there are other not designated wetlands around, there's some issue, and we want to take caution with anything that's put on the ground, especially the drainage. Asphalt is a petroleum product, when you break it up, you create millings, you know, you break that bond and then anything, there's really no empirical research or studies behind it, but there's potential petroleum to be released into the ground, especially in the wetlands, so we're trying to. That's something that we're going to work through in the preliminary, final planning stages, so again, this is, it's going to be almost a 10-acre piece of property. Most of what we're selling to them is unbuiltable. It is a designated wetland area, and he's made, been very creative with his layout to preserve as much of the natural features out there, being the trees. It will not, very little of it will be seen from the road, from either side, so to find somebody else that'd go in there and be this conservative with the property, it'd be hard pressed.
I appreciate those comments, and as was noted at the recent Planning Commission meeting, this is a, as you expressed this evening, this is a longtime Celine business proprietor who is in the Celine community and really invested our community's success, so it's great to see them grow and expand their footprint in the city of Celine. Mr. Girbaugh is the representative from council to the Planning Commission, is there anything you'd like to add?
Mr. Aiken has basically addressed it, I think the only thing was that there's a large western parking lot that may be reviewed in preliminary and the final in terms of how much they could defer in the future and making sure that what is done is needed.
Part of the area just for their, I believe, tractor trailers.
It's like staging and such for that, yeah.
What I told them initially is why on the preliminary site plan, put everything that you're ever going to want on the back for amendments. They haven't decided if they're going to phase this or how they're going to go about it, but if that, if and when that portion is developed, there'll have to be some sort of screening back there. Right now, it's kind of scragged, it's not tall, but it's very possible you'll see it from either Woodbridge, Woodlawn, I live on Woodlawn, so I get confused, what's that? Woodland or Industrial Drive to the north there.
And then the other thing again was the asphalt millage, but that's basically driven by Eagle, so I think we're not going to try and overrule anything that Eagle recommends at this time.
There's a crossing, there's a, I don't know if it's a natural drainage ditch or it was created back there to help with the flow of the wetlands or to alleviate some of the standing water back there, but they are working with Eagle, and that's going to be part of the process too. They'll have to submit all their approvals from you.
Thank you. Questions for our Planning Commission representative or our Community Development Director, Councilmember Rice?
Your curiosity does not affect my decision on this, but do you know if they're going to maintain the building that they have at the corner? Are they going to stay in those offices, or is that going to go up for sale?
They were leasing those offices, so they, they're moving, they want their own space.
So those will come up for lease, assumedly at some point?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Additional questions? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Just a quick comment, I just want to thank Community Development Director Aiken because he did a lot of, you know, back and forth with drawings and carving out this space to maximize both what the purchaser needed as well as maintaining some other wetland space, so I appreciate all the effort that he put into this.
Councilmember Hermont, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have one question about the addition or justification of the additional tractors and whether or not it encroaches on the master plan or our operations for enclosed or outdoor storage to keep it minimal as far as the external effects not to exceed or beyond property boundaries.
Yeah, that's where the buffer will come in, in this, these storage, I kind of wrestle that because they're going to be turning over, so they're going to be constantly moving out there. And then with external storage, anywhere it has to be either fenced in or buffered, so that's the intent behind putting the tree line up there along that western property boundary.
Any additional questions from the dais? Any discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Rice, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Aiken, thank you very much, appreciate your work on that. We move on to new business item 25-114, this is T-Pom Collective Bargaining Agreement. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2025 between T-Pom and the city of Celine, subject to final review by the city attorney.
Move to approve.
Moved by Girbaugh to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Acting City Manager Cole, would you like to begin, and then I will defer to Councilmember Girbaugh, since he is the council-appointed liaison to this collective bargaining unit?
Certainly. Excuse me, I have a little bit of allergies this evening, so please.
Something in the air in this room tonight.
So what we have in front of us tonight is the TP OAM Union Contract for your consideration and approval, hopefully. This contract does represent months of thoughtful work between the frontline operations staff, the team members who maintain our streets, utilities, facilities, and even our motor pool, and the city itself. It does reflect a balance between fiscal responsibility and our commitment to retain valued, skilled employees who are essential to delivering our high-quality public services every day to our residents. It also includes certification-based pay incentives, clarified language on scheduling and safety, and more modernized language that strengthens both accountability and workplace culture. I especially want to thank our negotiation team, our department heads, and our TP OAM representatives for approaching this process with mutual respect and a shared desire to see Celine succeed. And we're proud to bring forward a contract that exhibits operational excellence and reflects our strategic goals, and it positions the city very well for the future. So I hope that earlier today, or excuse me, last, earlier last week, you should have received a copy of the contract with a message from the city attorney. If you have any questions or concerns, happy to address those, but looking forward hopefully to this big roundup this evening.
Very good. Councilmember Girbaugh's liaison to this bargaining unit, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, this was one of my, I've done this, what, twice now or three times, and I think this was one of our better opportunities to really address the concerns that were brought forward. Acting City Manager Cole had addressed a couple of concerns that were brought up as relation to some other hirings and promotions and things that were immediately resolved and started off the whole take of this to become a very fruitful outcome. We addressed a lot of things related to some positions, we addressed things related to market adjustments. Really for me was addressing the licensure. We have a number of licenses that individuals have, and it encourages them to maintain those and keep those licenses, especially if we have individuals that will be filling in for others in terms of our wastewater treatment or water treatment, or even covering for staff and so forth that are some of our managers and such. The other part of it is, for me, is really recognizing that our employees have addressed, I think what they feel is really something that they want to be recognized, and I think we've done that with the changes that we did involving the salaries. And we pay our employees what they're valued, and I think that's what we're doing here.
Very good. Are there questions for the acting city manager or Councilmember Girbaugh? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. The only question I have is more just understanding, so the document that we received is in final form, correct? So what we are agreeing to, there is no changes? I just had a question regarding the language of the motion to make sure that there were not going to be changes beyond what was, what we've seen tonight.
Correct. Unless council chooses to modify the agreement this evening, it will be as it has been presented.
Perfect, thank you.
Any additional questions? Or discussion on the motion? We have a motion on the floor, then moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Final new business item is 25-115, resolution acknowledging Celine Area Senior Citizens Council Incorporated. This is a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted.
Point of order, we already have a 115, the blanket purchase order, so does.
So we'll change it to 116.
We already have a 116.
Okay, then let's see, where's the 116?
It is above it, it's the resignation of Mary.
Okay, let's do 117 then, without objection.
That's fine.
Okay.
Can we move to acknowledge it?
Sure.
Yes.
You want to move to acknowledge, Mr. Girbaugh? Okay, moved by Girbaugh to acknowledge, seconded by Dillon. I'll open it up for questions.
If I can.
Go ahead, yep.
I'm trying to understand, I know Shannon Beeman has brought this forward to us, and I understand that, you know, the county is trying to figure out how to transfer this money and everything. For me, it's trying to figure out, do we really want to be another intermediary for this, considering the seniors work with the schools? And then we have our rec in here, and I'm not sure why we would want to now add the recreation in here. I can understand we're Celine Area Senior Citizen Council, we'd want them to get the access to those funds. I'm just not sure, this is my concern with this whole approach from the county, is that they've added another entire administrative layer, which cuts into the funding, which could have gone through the existing structure of the county. But now we're moving into this, and that's like, the user should get the money without another group necessarily having to, I don't know, oversee it or whatever, and I wouldn't hate to see a battle between, and not to say there'd be a battle, but between the city rec and the seniors. And then we also have the CARES money that seems to be going to the facility, and I'd rather see that CARES mileage re-leased before we give them another $200,000. So there's a lot to this, I see what they're attempting to try and do, I just don't necessarily want to see double-dipping going into one organization where there's a lot of funding. So I'm saying a lot, I just don't know what this resolution is attempting to do, except agree to what the county's doing and basically giving money to the seniors, which is doubling what they're already receiving from our taxpayers.
So here's my understanding from my conversations with Commissioner Beeman, our commissioner. So I believe this resolution was specifically requested by one or more of the county board of commissioners. And the model that we used here is based off of what was used in the city of Manchester. I believe Manchester, Dexter, Chelsea, Ann Arbor, maybe Ypsilanti as well, have already approved similar resolutions. The main intent is to simply designate the area or community senior center as the main entity that advances the interests and provides programs and amenities for senior citizens. My assumption is, and some of this was outlined in a recent article in MLive, in the Ann Arbor paper, there's, so the county set up the office to distribute the funds last week. My understanding is that there's going to be two separate funding streams. There's going to be a direct funding stream that will likely go to senior centers in the various communities throughout Washtenaw County, and then there will be a separate pot of dollars that will be awarded based on grants or RFPs, specific applications. The, you asked good questions, Mr. Girbaugh. To the point about Celine Recreation, the acting city manager, city clerk, and I were kind of playing around with that verbiage today. I asked Commissioner Beeman directly if it would be inappropriate or improper to include Celine Recreation in the resolution. She confirmed with the chairwoman of the county board, Katie Scott, that it would not be. My concern or the genesis for putting that in there is if we didn't specifically enumerate it, it may present challenges in the future in terms of getting funding to support those programs. And as has been noted publicly in the past, I've said it privately, I've said it publicly, our recreation department, rec center in particular, provides a lot of services and amenities geared towards our senior residents. And one deficiency that has been noted by this group and several others in the community is that. is that it doesn't receive a lot of support from external entities outside of the City of Celine. So that was the, the impetus for, for including them. If you wanted to modify the verbiage and say Celine, City of Celine slash Celine Recreation or just City of Celine, I would probably be amenable to that. Again, we played around with that verbiage today. I, I think the issue of designating the Celine Senior Council in this resolution is purely perfunctory, and it came at a request by, again, one or more of the members of the County Board of Commissioners, Commissioners. Councilmember Rice?
So I suppose my question then is, for the money that is going to be automatically distributed, is it going to be 50% to both of what Celine would be getting?
I don't think they've established that criteria.
Okay. Because that, my hesitation is what both of, both of you have just expressed, is A, we want to make sure that the Recreation Center gets what it deserves for its senior programming, and I hesitate to allow it to go to just Celine Area Senior Council and then be redistributed to the rec center, because we've seen how that works before. But I almost wonder if this resolution needs to then designate that it's an equal split between the two.
We could certainly play around the verbiage and-
Or would they just do that automatically by having two entities? I don't know.
No, I, I think it's, I think it's fully their discretion.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the verbiage can be modified. I did, I don't, I don't see it as guaranteeing that an equal dispersment of dollars will be sent to both the senior center and Celine Recreation, or the rec center more specifically. Councilmember Harmon?
Did you say that it was allowed to have more than one entity? I thought it said that we needed to designate a entity.
No, I asked specifically Commissioner Beeman, who then referred to the board chair, and said it would not be problematic to mention Celine Recreation or the City of Celine.
In addition?
In addition to the Celine Center, yes.
Is there opportunity to change it in the future?
I haven't asked that question specifically. I don't, do you have any insights on that?
I would imagine that there will be an annual election moving forward, but just as this process is new for them, it's new for all of us, and they're figuring some of these things out. I would, I would think that regardless of what we indicate on the resolution, that however they do the split or give the funds to the Celine area will be the way that they distribute those funds. And most likely, it will be going directly to the senior center, unless we can apply for some programs. But I think it's very thoughtful and a wise idea to add in the Recreation Center regardless.
Councilmember Seo, and then Councilmember Dillon?
I just would hate to try and wordsmith it too much beyond what you've already done and upset the people at the county and cause them to somehow overlook the entire city of Celine.
Mayor Pretim Dillon?
So what is the urgency of doing this? This is something that we received this afternoon, very late this afternoon. Do we need to take action on this tonight, and why?
Well, I wouldn't say need, but I certainly know that most of the communities in our area have started passing these, and in order to receive any funding, we will need to pass a resolution.
I mean, do they have checks in hand? Is that what it is? Or, I mean, I, I would like clarification. I would rather have Commissioner Beeman here to answer our questions, because the other thing is, do we have to designate it as the City of Celine Recreation? Or is it the City of Celine as the collector that's then distributing? And-
Because we could provide services, other than transportation.
Like if we had transportation, People's Express is a, is a primary thing that I'm thinking of at this point.
What would the Harmon just saying then, and that, that final line now therefore be resolved, that the City of Celine, the Celine City Council designates the Celine Area Senior Council Incorporated and City of Celine slash Celine Recreation as municipally recognized nonprofit organizations serving older adults and affirms?
But again, I, I'd like to continue on in that I, I concur with what Councilmember Rice had said, which is understanding where you can say, you know, understanding what part we're getting. Is this, you know, a 50/50? Is this a 90/10? You know, an 80/20? I, I mean, I guess I'd like to have a better understanding, and under the umbrella of the senior center, does that include things like Meals on Wheels? Or is it just the center? Is it the building? Is it programming? I, I'd like to sort of understand it a little bit more.
I, I think we all would. I think the concern is they don't, I'm not sure that criteria has been developed yet. So when we can extend an invite, that, that's not problematic. I, I just don't know that she's going to have much detail to share at, at this particular juncture. I think what's been established thus far is an office has been created, and there's an understanding that there's going to be some direct funding streams likely to area senior centers, and then a separate pot of money that different groups and entities, mostly public, will be able to apply for, for, for grants. Let's just go.
I don't see where moving this ahead tonight would impact our ability in the future to alter it if we saw it necessary to do so.
Well, let's vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt, and then see if there's a motion to approve, postpone, or if you want to get into wordsmithing or modifying the verbiage, that would be, be fine as well. We have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. What's your, what's your pleasure?
I'm moved to approve.
As submitted, Mr. Seo?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I would second that.
Okay. Moved by Seo, seconded by Lesch to approve as submitted. Is there discussion? Mayor Pretim Dillon?
So just understanding then, does it still, is it City of Celine or is it City of Celine Recreation?
What's your, what's your pleasure for that final now therefore be resolved?
You could do it both ways. I can't suggest it.
I, I mean, I would, I would say it's probably just safer to say, again, just to read the first line, that the Celine City Council designates the Celine Area Senior Council Incorporated and City, the City of Celine slash Celine Recreation as municipally recognized nonprofit organizations, yada, yada.
But you're, you're still designating, because then now are you creating three entities?
Well, not really, because Celine, Celine Recreation is a subset of the City of Celine.
But by calling it out specifically then, I guess, do they not trust the City of Celine to distribute the money accordingly? Is what, like, are other municipalities doing this? It's only going to senior centers?
Yes, the only senior centers are being designated or, or senior services. So given that we do have a significant amount of senior program and senior services at the rec center, the mayor had wanted to include the Recreation Center so that we have the ability to receive money on behalf of the, this particular-
Right.
-funding source. So the other part of it is too, that we can modify as more information comes out, and I would be happy to, as the mayor suggested, extend the invitation to Commissioner Beeman if you so choose.
But we, if, I apologize for interrupting Acting City Manager Cole, but you had mentioned today even trying to set up a meeting with her to, to try to get a better understanding, or at least a timeline of when additional information would be, would be disseminated, which I think would be very productive.
And just so you know that as a local unit of government, we can receive funds from the county at any time, and we don't need any special designation like a general nonprofit would.
Let me, I got, Mr. Gearbaugh always got a question, I want to jump back to Mr. Seo. Mr. Seo, it's, it's your calls, and you're the mover of the motion. Do you want the verbiage amended in that last section, or are you comfortable with it as is?
It's fine with me. I have the City of Celine if you think it's appropriate.
Okay, it's, you are making the motion, so City of Celine.
I accept that.
Okay. Mr. Lesch is the second, are you good with that? Okay, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Gearbaugh.
Just a clarification, you know, you just mentioned that, you know, the rec center provides its own senior services and such like that. Could it potentially qualify as its own senior facility?
At this point right now, it is not designated as its own senior care facility, its only senior programming facility, but that's something that we certainly could move towards, and I think it's one of the, the options that the rec center task forces currently is determining.
I was just saying, if we could carve it out as its own facility, then the seniors, I mean, the biggest issue is here is like, hey, there's a pot of money, and every one of these designated facilities are getting funds. If we're doing that to a degree already, how do we distinguish that so it can get its own funds, and then the seniors get their own funds, and we're separate? So if we can talk to Shannon or something of that nature, I think we should push for that too. But I support this is fine, if this is what we need to do at this point.
Mayor Pretim Dillon, before we vote?
Well, thank you. So just understanding too then, I mean, I, I think, I mean, I understand that they're trying to have a cadence and have all of these in line so that they can move forward. If we can rescind, modify, whatever, at any given time, I think that, you know, we can move forward, because there are pieces right now. The other piece that we haven't talked about is, this is $200,000 of money coming in, and understanding what are the priorities of the Celine community and our seniors to spend this. We hear constantly, transportation, 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 and yet we never get that off the table. This is the perfect opportunity to develop a transportation plan with these funds, and I just want to make sure that they're just not slipping into some other programming to, to just sort of swap money out. So I, I really want to be thoughtful about this. And I want to be very thoughtful in, as the mayor had mentioned, the other part. I mean, this is $11 million of money for which we are getting $200,000. So there is a lot of grant money up for grabs that we need to, as a community, figure out what our plan is and be proactive for it.
Councilmember Rice, before we vote?
I would say with that, with what Mayor Pretim Dillon is saying, I would really like to see a town hall with Commissioner Beeman to discuss this with our seniors, maybe at the senior center or here.
I had mentioned that to her, but Acting City Manager Cole, perhaps you could reconfirm that when you, you chat with her. They've done that little dog and pony show, I don't mean that in a pejorative way, in other communities, including Manchester, which I think was done in the past 30 days, and was very well received. So I think that would be great. And this, this, this obviously facility, this room is perfect for accommodating an event of, of that type, largely because we have audiovisual, can record, and it can allow people to participate remotely. So, okay, very good. Okay, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Seo, seconded by Lesch to approve with some slightly modified verbiage in that last section. Is everybody clear on the motion?
Do we change the title last?
No, I don't think so. I think that's fine. Everybody good? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is reports, announcements, and updates from committees, commissions, or task forces. Again, I'll start with Councilmember Harmon and end with Councilmembers Rice and myself.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Lesch?
Jazz in the Park's coming up in a couple of weeks, on the 19th. I encourage everybody to go to that. And I also wanted to extend a welcome to our four new firefighters who have just started this week.
That's excellent. Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Seo?
Yes, sir. The cemetery board met last week, the week before, week before, and we met with Dan Cabage, who is the engineer for Flays Van de Brink, and he's going to begin preparing bid documents for the repair of the wall along Monroe Street on the east side of the cemetery. We probably won't let the thing forbid until next year, but they want to begin the preparation of the bid documents so they can begin to develop some kind of estimates of what it might cost, so we know how it will impact these cemetery's funds that are available. Apparently they have about $1 million available now in a perpetual care fund. We don't want to spend it all, because there are other items that we need to continually work on in the cemetery. But we also asked if Sarah Finch might prepare some kind of alternatives, like a bond issued for that wall, or a partial bond for part of the wall, and, you know, cover some kind of condemnation of that in the perpetual care. Anyway, that's what we talked about a lot at the cemetery.
Not on that question, is there going to be any follow-up to this, do you determine, does the whole wall need to be replaced, or can it just be repaired?
No, they want to do the whole wall. What they want to do, Dean, is put a wall in front of the existing wall, and then repair the space along the sidewalk, and repair some of the sidewalk too, and then the fence all along the top of that wall.
So something that should be paid by the city.
And put in new drainage and everything else.
Thank you, Mr. Seo. Mayor Pretim Dillon, reports, announcements, or updates from boards, committees, or task forces?
Thank you. On Thursday, the zoning board of appeals met. We had a petitioner that was looking to split a curpursel. When it went to vote, it was actually a tied vote, so the motion ended up failing, and it did not proceed.
Councilmember Gearbaugh, reports, announcements, or updates from boards, committees, or commissions?
Just as I had mentioned to all of you, the finance committee met last week, or subcommittee, met last week to just review the disposal. We had another concern that came up. And as I had mentioned, Sarah Finch and Acting City Manager Cole were recommending some changes to our disposal policy, and then actually we looked a little bit about procurement and some other things that need to be addressed coming forward. The current concern was that despite an investigation and everything resolved, this exact same issue occurred again, and we need to figure out how to properly communicate and making sure that our staff and everyone know policies and understand where to locate those. And I think that was a start by creating a new SharePoint Drive to some degree. I'd like to thank everyone that showed up for the July 5th event at the depot on Saturday. If you were there, you could see me fly a kite, and I mean, I think a lot of people have been wanting to tell me that. So it was a fun event. We had probably about 35 people that came out. We appreciate all the visits by the community.
Very good. Councilmember Rice?
All my committee meetings are next week. The one thing that I will note is I sent an email to the policy subcommittee, and we'll be taking a look at potentially adding some language regarding e-bikes for the downtown business district, as we've heard. I specifically have heard from a couple of business owners that the fast versions of the e-bikes are a weapon past their businesses. So we're going to take a look at community practices and some other areas, and hopefully we'll be able to add something on our agenda soon.
Very good. Thank you. We have Mr. Anderson here, and we appreciate your patience this evening. Wanted to have a follow-up on the very thoughtful presentation that was submitted in our most recent council meeting regarding the future of the Bixby Marionettes. I'm going to put the Acting City Manager on the spot. She and I didn't have an opportunity to speak about this today, but we have in the past. Manager Cole, and if I'm remembering or stating your position incorrectly, please, please, well, please interject. My understanding is that from previous discussions we've had, that maybe an appropriate compromise relating to the Bixby Marionettes downstairs is that we tried to reduce their footprint in the large storage room that they have been held in now for over 15 years, that we tried to get as many things off the ground as possible elevated, and that it would be your recommendation that we allow for a more protracted period of time, i.e. for the Marionettes, props, backdrops, two-dimensional items, to remain in the basement, but that we get a waiver approved, acknowledging that we forfeit, that they forfeit any liability in the event that there's a flood or an issue in the, in the basement that causes damage to any component of that collection. Is that synopsis fair and accurate?
That is exactly fair and completely accurate.
Okay. So again, you and I talked about that previously, I'm very much in favor of that, and very much in favor of empowering you and legal to draft the necessary documents and bring it back to city council. Again, that's, that's, those are thoughts that were initially articulated by the Acting City Manager. They're shared by me, let me work my way through, around the dais, or through the dais, rather. Councilmember Harmon, what are your thoughts? So do you have any additional questions from the presentation a few weeks back?
No. What was the protracted amount of time that you were interested in looking at?
They can originally ask us for up to seven years, and so I think with the waiver of the liability and the really the reasonfulness of them finding a new location that they can house the Marionettes in safely is probably three or four years away. So with those things considered, I think that that would be an acceptable amount of time to give them enough space to plan and get ready for moving them into a very secure, safe place.
If I may, I would recommend three, but include language that indicates that extensions may be granted upon request with the, an affirmative vote from city council. Thoughts on that? Does that sound reasonable to you?
That is all I have, but I did see something, I don't know if it's ever been considered, I did see a mobile museum. Is this something that you had, you guys had ever considered doing? I know that there's a, you know, a desire to keep everything together, and, but also for, for people to see it, so.
Let's, yeah, come up to the, the lectern there if you wouldn't mind, John. Make sure the green light is illuminated at the base. If you have any thoughts per Councilmember Harmon's question, we'd welcome them.
That sounds interesting. We haven't discussed, I need to, I'm not sure, we haven't discussed anything like that, but I can bring it up to the board tomorrow.
There's a lot of different concepts like that. I know there's an honor wall for the veterans that travels, and I just saw a toy, antique toy museum, mobile museum. Anyway, just trying to come up with some creative solutions to help think outside the box as far as meeting your timelines.
Mr. Lesch, your thoughts on the recommendation?
It is a large collection, so it would have to be a large mobile, something or other, but your group has done a great job of getting everything kind of consolidated down. I mean, I'm totally comfortable with the extension.
Okay, Mr. CO?
Extension sounds good to me. Like I've said in the past, and I'll say it again, the utility or the value, I think, of those Marionettes is in their use and in their consumption by the public. So even if it means splitting the collection up, it seems to me it's still a valuable way, if it means getting it out to various segments of the community, a valuable way to look at the future, you know?
Mayor Pretem Dillon?
One of the things that I'd like to make sure is that we can have a conversation here, but I'd like to make sure that we are, that there is something in writing that is very specific, that is brought back to this body that we agree on, because we're sort of having a loose conversation here and just being, I mean, what I'd like to see is, if we're going to establish a timeline, that there should be some sort of benchmarks to it. And it's the 501, it's moving, you know, what we're going to be doing to move forward. And yes, absolutely 100%, there has to be a release of any kind of liability from the owners, from the family, from the 501, from all parties, to the cities, for the city. But the other piece that I have to say that I'm a little concerned with, that I think we just, we just have to craft it, is making sure that they have access to the Marionettes, but at the same time that it's secure for the city. Having outsiders in into a storage room that has other materials in it is not really in the best interest of the city, in my opinion. So I think that there needs to be something established, whether it's kind of caged off where only they have access to it, because likewise, I don't think people from the city should be able to go down there and go into the collection. So understanding how that's going to work, how would access they have into the building, how that works, do they have to be escorted? I'd like it to be just very specific to understand that.
Thank you. The Councilmember Girbaugh?
For me, it's understanding, this will be transferring the ownership of it to the 501(c)(3). And so the city will no longer have any ownership in it, it will be their responsibility. Okay. I'm fine with the three-year, potential, the three-year terms like that is. It might need to be subject to an annual review, just because if the needs of the city should change or something down there, because it's similar, I think, and probably we should have a similar relationship with the society, just because we store things down there, I want to make sure we're consistent. Other than that, I think it's fine with me. I mean, I know it's going to take time to figure out where they could go to, and for me, I agree with Councilmember CO, I believe. It probably, however it can be handled, needs to be put in the best situation where it can actually be viewed, and I'm not so sure that's going to be in our community at this time, so.
Mr. Girbaugh brought up a good point. So it's actually approving a timeframe in which the collection can remain in the basement, approving a waiver of liability, and then transferring ownership, which also requires, if I'm not mistaken, I'm an attorney, the dissolution of the trust agreement that was approved by City Council in 1997.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Rice?
Yeah, that all sounds fine to me. I also wonder, too, if perhaps the committee could, the board could come up with a written report, nothing super exhaustive, but like, who you've contacted in the past, kind of just like, in words, walk us through that process, should, you know, something pop up, you know, in one of our lives where we say, oh, I don't know if they've talked to this person, you know, if there's something that we could reference, or, you know, somehow have points of contact, you know, things like that, just more like on paper for us, so that, you know, we can also, you know, help with this process, you know, to the extent that we may be able to.
It kind of sounds like a will.
I mean, to a certain extent, like, you know, what we've done so far, and then like, what we would like to do, just more in writing, just kind of so that, you know, should you choose, you know, should you win the lottery tomorrow and choose to walk away from the Marionettes, can we have this information down on paper for us to kind of follow up on?
Okay, it looks like we have some consensus. Go ahead, Councilmember Harmout.
Just one thing I would maybe also want to add is, if we're going to be doing extensions, there should be some criteria about what would qualify for extensions, like there needs to be maybe meeting milestones in order to be provided extensions past the three years.
You clear on the direction, Acting City Manager Cole?
Yes.
John, you clear on the direction? So we'll keep you in the loop and likely have something to digest. I'm not sure if we'll have it at the next meeting, but I would suspect sometime in August for sure, at the absolute latest. Do you need anything more from us, or what can we do at this juncture to be helpful to you?
Actually, this, this direction sounds, I don't know, I think it sounds good.
Good.
Don't need to come up with any more creative ideas. I did write up some, a list of grants that we're looking at, and what was the other question? Who has, what sort of active groups, Marionette groups are within the country? I've got some of that information here, if council.
We'd welcome that. If you want to give that, if you want to provide that to the city clerk, she'll make sure that it's distributed to the members.
And there's a bookmark in there for each of you.
Very good. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your attendance this evening. Thanks for hanging on to the bitter end.
We were, I was going to say something at the beginning, and then it was for agenda items only, and I didn't see Bixby on the agenda, so I waited, and then I saw Bixby on the agenda.
Next time, next time you know. If it's enumerated under discussion, you're welcome to address the issue at the first public conference.
Sit down.
Thank you. We've got two more issues. Rex, our task force, Mr. Girbaugh?
I don't know if we're going to talk about this next week, or just have an update, because I know we're kind of postponing it now, and maybe having a little bit of an update, understanding what our deliverable dates are going to be instead, and what's going to happen, I guess.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to plan to have a memo, and actually, I'm at the next council agenda on the 21st, and we can provide a brief but thoughtful update on where we stand with the group, the work of the various subcommittees, and what our timeline and expectations are moving forward. Yeah.
Because we still, and just, we still have meetings scheduled with the task force, and I thought maybe those need to be taken off the calendar, so just FYI that. Then my other one is regarding the anonymous public comment that was read at one of our special meetings. It has not been our policy to read anonymous, and I am concerned that that occurred at that meeting. A number of the information and stuff in there, for mine, was not necessarily substantial in terms, or substantiated in terms of what was stated and made. We receive a lot of emails. I've received emails in the past about staff, a number of things anonymously, and we have as council have received them. We have not entered those into the record, despite what may have been said, that it's maybe something that's allowed in a, per the open meeting. We have not practiced that, and I don't want to get too far into it, but we need to redevelop our policy. We actually had somebody do an anonymous phone call comment for the ZBA on last Wednesday, so I don't think we want to do this going forward unless we have a clear policy in practice, I think.
Well, my understanding is, and perhaps this can be confirmed with legal, I don't, first of all, I'm not an advocate for this, but we don't have to take any written comments. I think the law requires us to provide public comment periods at the beginning and end of the meeting, affording those who would wish to attend the meeting an opportunity to speak. We go the extra mile by providing those who can't attend or want to provide something in writing, the opportunity that it can be read into the public record during the public comment period. Do you have any insights on that, Acting City Manager Cole? Is that correct? Or maybe the city clerk knows?
I have spoke with several, oops, with other communities, and a lot of them do not allow written comments. You have to either show up, or you do not get your comments read. Now, they could be emailed, which I think would be fine, but I will be happy to do whatever this council wants me to do, so.
So I guess there's two questions. One, we got in the habit of accepting written comments during the pandemic for obvious reasons, and then just continued that moving forward. So I guess there's two questions here. One, do you want to continue to afford the public or community stakeholders the opportunity to provide written comment that can be read into the public record, either during the first or second public comment period, whichever is applicable? And then, two, if you want to allow that moving forward, it would be probably a one-sentence modification of the policy that simply states, you have to, the document has to be signed, and a name has to be acknowledged. Let me start with Mr. Girbaugh, since he was the person who, individual, excuse me.
And I think that's kind of what I'd like to see, is that if we require you to come into council to be public, you don't have to state your name and address, which is fine. But if it's a written document, it could be written by anybody for any purpose to do damage, and without having some significance in it, I just don't feel that that gives the same weight as a person being here, because we do record it, you see their face, it's all that type of situation, they understand that. A written document that's just submitted without a name or anything on it is simply an attempt to try and either stir a pot or do something. And I feel if you actually put your name and everything on it, like we have it described on our page and everything, that will give it some legitimacy, and so that we can feel that it's an appropriate statement from someone that actually can be validated.
Okay, Councilmember Rice?
Yes to written comment, because accessibility, we need to be allowing folks to submit written comments. I think where we have a fine line is if folks are emailing us, like, are we going to require, you can email from joshmo@gmail.com, are we requiring a name be attached to that email? I think that is, I don't know, is that, is that fair, considering, I mean, yes, you do have to be face-to-face, but you don't have to state your name to the public. I'm torn on that, but yeah, absolutely yes to written comment, because it's an accessibility feature. I'm just torn on the anonymity of it.
If the consensus is to require the association of a name with a written comment, or, excuse me, a comment that is provided in advance of the meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks read, I would stipulate that they could submit it via email, but for those residents, particularly older residents, who might not have an email or access to the computer, I would have no trepidation allowing them to provide a written document that's submitted to the clerk with the, a notion, of course, that they sign it and acknowledge their name. I think that would make it more accessible as well.
I could be amenable to that.
Sure. Okay. Councilmember Harmout?
I agree with that.
Okay. Councilmember Lesch?
Yeah, I think if we could get some way to validate it, too, because, you know, people can send things with anybody's name on them, but to have some method of, you know, whether it's just calling back or something, saying, we received an email.
Now, do you want, like, a phone number, an email, a name? I guess, I just want to make sure that I'm getting the correct information from this point.
I think we want a legitimate name, not Dick Tracy or Donald Duck.
Well, because somebody could say John Smith, and it might actually be their name, but if you want a phone number to go, because their name is John Smith, I can request that also.
I do know our written diagrams require that you have to specify the meeting, the date, and there's some other things that are, and you have to address the specific topic and all that, which, that seemed like that's the requirement that we have for email, so we should stick to that kind of format. Or create an electronic format in which you submit it, because then you could track the IP address if you wanted to.
Mr. CO?
The whole thing presents a question in my mind, because if the attorneys advise us that people can appear before us, whether we know them or not, and not state their name or their address, and still have their comment heard, I don't understand the difference between that and anonymous mail. An anonymous mailing is also getting rise to people's right to speak and to have their voice heard. I understand exactly what you're saying, and I tend to totally disregard anything I get in the mail that's anonymous, just because I fear it's not, if it's not worth their time to put their name down and identify themselves to me, it's not worth my time to try and chase down whatever it is they're complaining about or talking about or have questions about. So, I don't know, I'm torn.
If it's anonymous, I could email it just to council, and then you guys could see it, but I would let them know if it's emailed to me that they would not be read.
Yeah, I think the purpose here would be, first, it's somebody who's submitting a written comment or question, and they are specifically asking, requesting that it be read as part of the public comment period. Yeah, you're right. Nothing precludes an anonymous individual from mailing something to City Council or emailing council. We're talking specifically about it being read into the public record.
Yeah, because we need to still have that open door that people can report things if they're not comfortable reporting it anonymously, but yes, the reading in public, I think, is the portion that draws the question.
I'm sorry, I got to get to Mayor Pretem Dillon.
So, thank you. Like Mr. CO, it's sort of a weird area, trying to figure this out, but I will say that we have signs on our doors, when you enter this room, that this room is being recorded, and you give up your right to privacy when you come in here. So, I mean, coming in here, you know you cannot be anonymous. And so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, like, even if they don't give their name, they are still going to be recorded, their voice will be recorded, their photo will be recorded, it will be on record, unlike receiving something in the mail that has nothing attached to it. Where I do struggle right now is, I do love the idea of accessibility, because if you're not, if you work on Monday nights, then you're kind of out of luck with coming and giving public comment. So I do like the idea of emailing. I think we were very thoughtful when we crafted that during COVID, where we were very specific about where it went to, what the parameters were, that it had to be designated, that it was being read, what it was for. And so I do like that. I'm concerned about moving from that to a written note, because then that goes from a written letter to a post-it, to a phone call, to a voicemail. I mean, it seems like you're opening up a really big box. And so I think as long as we're providing one method in which people can provide comment outside of in-person, I think that is the way to go, and not get into written comments or drop-offs, things like that. Just because I do feel like it kind of, it's also going to be a lot harder for the, truthfully, for the clerk to keep track of. I mean, this anonymous one was apparently dropped in one of our drop boxes. Well, we have a timeline of when things get done, so what if it didn't make it? What if there was something like that? I mean, email has a paper trail to it. It has, you know, so I feel like that, that sort of protects all parties.
Okay, it looks like we got consensus, or you can maybe take a stab at this. I mean, per Mayor Pretem Dillon's comments, I understand her perspective, I just profoundly and respectfully disagree. I think that there are many people in the community who do not have access to a computer, are not internet savvy, do not actively use or have email. If they wanted to provide a written comment and had accessibility issues and were unable to attend a meeting, I want to make it as easy for them to share their thoughts and raise their questions and concerns as well. We're not talking about voicemails or putting something on a post-it note, but if somebody wants to address a question or concern that they have regarding a city issue or a specific agenda item in a letter form, and they put their name to it, I'm happy to entertain that as part of the public record. I'm a little bit in the same vein with Councilmember CO. I'm, I mean, I don't put a great deal of faith and confidence in anonymous letters, but at the same time, if, people have the right to say what they want, even if they want to say ad hominem, pejorative things about me, that's their right, I don't have to like it. But I think the consensus, at least this evening, is pretty clear that we do want to put a few more controls on that. I would probably work with the Acting City Manager and legal counsel, and maybe we can consider something either at our next meeting or our first meeting in August. But it seems pretty clear that the group does want to require a name be associated with a written comment, if it is going to be read into the public record as part of one or both of our public comment periods. Go ahead.
And this may require a validation, that you receive a written one, if it's signed, call the individual, say, we're going to read this, is this your letter? Boom, and that's fine.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I just want to reiterate to the community that that doesn't mean that you can anonymously send council something, or anonymously send the city manager something. We're strictly talking about things that are going to be read in public, on the public record. You can feel free to tell us about an issue you're having, you can feel free to tell us your opinion on something. We are not squashing people's opinions and ability to speak out. We're just talking about, on public record, we want to make sure that things aren't going wild in the background anonymously.
Yep. Good, go ahead.
Definitely, in case of, Councilmember Girbaugh brought up with the anonymous, they asked to remain anonymous. I did confirm the name, I did have the phone number and everything, I spoke to this individual. You know, in ZBA and planning commission, it's a different thing. I kept to mail everybody within 300 feet. It's very rare I get a call from anybody outside of 300 feet who may have read it in the paper or online somewhere. But we do offer three different options. One is, you know, they can snail mail us a letter, email, or call the office and speak to us. But in this case, that person asked to remain anonymous, because they just said they oppose it.
They don't want their neighbor to know.
I think we just need to figure out how to address that, so.
Yeah. I mean, validating what was caller ID, it was all right there, so what was explained to me matched everything, so. It just, I didn't get a voicemail. I don't like this, and click.
Clerk Royal, City Manager Cole, you clear? Clerk Royal, City Manager Cole, you clear on the direction here? OK, very good. We come now to the second public comment period under the open, meaning exactly any person may come forward and make comment to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who wishes to speak, they're requested, but of course, not required to state their name and address for the record. Please note, City Council generally does not respond to questions or comments during this comment period.
You're good.
You're good? No written comments provided in advance of tonight's meeting. So unless there is additional business to be brought before City Council, the chair would be delighted to entertain a motion adjourned this July 7 meeting at 9:22.
I'd be happy to delight you with that motion.
OK. I'm going to let you be the second, because Dillon beat you to the punch there. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Oppose say nay. I say aye, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Are you getting a little slack?